I am just getting us live onto YouTube, so just bear with us.
Emily, I just sent you the streaming link.
Is David not joining us tonight?
We're just working through some technical difficulties. Sarah Fox, can you hear me?
Yes, I just asked, is David not joining us this evening?
He is.
Okay.
John, can you hear me? Emily, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, you should have the link for the YouTube if you could post that, please.
Yeah, it's all set.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Testing. You can hear that? Bing, can you hear me?
Sarah Fox, can you hear me?
I can't see Megan. It looks like her screen doesn't work.
Maybe it's coming back on? No.
I, I hear you.
All right, can everyone see and hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great.
All right, hopefully we are still live on YouTube. Yes, it says we are. We have all members of the school committee present and I will call us, hold on a second. James, are you there where I can give you permission? Does MHTV need permission? All right, I'm not hearing from them, so I will call us to order at 7:05. The first order, yeah, the first order of business is public comment. So if anyone wants to make public comment, please raise their hand. I use the raise hand function and I will call on you. Just wanted to fill everybody in a little bit on the process that we've had to go through the past couple of days. I know it was frustrating to some people because when the new guidance came out, we were hopeful that it could just be enacted by Dr. Bucky. And then I reached out to our MAS, Massachusetts School Committee rep, and to just make sure with her, she said no, that because we do have the policy, we did need to call a meeting. She said to check with legal to see if we could make it as an emergency meeting. And legal said no, that we could not make it as an emergency meeting, which meant that we needed to post for the full 48 hours. So that brings us to this evening. I appreciated the town clerk and their flexibility on Monday evening, you know, to sort of putting this posting through at the last minute for us so that we could pull this off this evening. So I don't see any hands raised, so I will take us into our only order of business for the evening, which is our mask policy. So in everyone's Dropbox, we did receive edits to the mask policy. Further edits from our ones from last week. We did, Dr. Bucky had the good sense to send it off over to legal. And legal weighed in and all of the red lining and the red additions are what our legal is suggesting our policy reflect after this evening. So I will read off some of the more important, you know, there's a few words tossed in here and there about updated guidance. But what is being suggested, given the new guidance from DESI, is that masks must be worn by all individuals inside school buildings, including all schools and the school district central offices and on school transportation. Students are exempt from masking requirements when outdoors on school property, even when social distancing cannot be maintained. All other individuals who are not students must wear masks outdoor on school property when social distancing cannot be maintained. Individuals attending school sponsored events that do not occur on school property are subject to masking requirements applicable to that property. Further down in our policy, where the mask breaks come in, there's a little bit taken out of which ideally occur outdoors. And then during physical education classes, choir singing, brass, woodwind instruments or musical theater, all of which occur while outside at a minimum of 10 feet, physical distancing between individuals is all struck. So that's what legal weighed in with. Thoughts from the committee? Sarah? And then Megan?
So I will say, when I read this as it was presented, as you just read it, I was really, really surprised to read certain aspects. Because last week, it seemed that it was the will of the committee to do away with the mask requirement on school property outside of school hours. And the way this is written now puts that back in. So if you're an adult at a soccer game on Saturday, you need to wear a mask again. And so I just want to make sure that everyone's clear that this was the intent that they were looking for, that everything we passed last, well, the bulk of what we passed last Thursday has been negated. So like lacrosse, town soccer, all of that on our property on the weekends, according to this new mask as a policy, as you just presented it, we just put those masks back on people.
Megan?
So I'm just looking at that again because that was one thing that kind of stuck out to me too, Sarah. Because it does say here, all the individuals who are not students must continue to wear masks outdoors on school property. So I would agree, you know, there's two things. One is looking at the DESI guidance, it does say that adults must still wear masks. But I guess the way I understood that is that it would be during school hours, not out of school hours. So I don't necessarily agree with the DESI guidance personally, but my understanding is we cannot be less restrictive than DESI guidance. We can be more, but not less. So it sounds like they, you know, during school hours, adults must wear masks. But I would say that we should, I would like to see us modify it so that it's only during school hours. Just when you were reading through that again with the mask break piece, it says during mask breaks, which, or during mask breaks with a minimum of six feet of physical distance. But if they're outside, do they still require that six feet distance?
So that was one of my questions too. And that, we actually do have this on the agenda for tomorrow night's meeting as well. So I think if we decide to pass major parts of this today, and then we can come back to it tomorrow. So that's a good thing. But that was one of my questions earlier today as I read through it, is do we even need that mask break section anymore? Because it seems silly. You know, the guidance says inside, you've got to have a mask on, outside you don't, period. So that's that. So that's where my thinking is on that. So I would suggest we strike that completely. And then I agree with you, Megan, that I would like to see it with the adult piece and with the guidance, as silly as it seems, that it reads that we sort of keep that language for the adults in as during school hours.
Right. So the only thing about the mask break though, is that, and not that I think this is going to happen often, but if there's a rainy day and the kids are inside, you still want them to have the ability to take their mask off at some point during the day. Right? So you just have to make sure that that is covered in this policy, right? Because if they're inside all day, they're going to need a mask break, right? So it's just making sure that the language.
Sarah Fox?
Did anybody actually call legal? I mean, I made this, I'm sorry, it's, sorry, for the screaming in the background. But did anybody actually speak to legal? I'm assuming that would have been Sarah Gold and/or John Bucky and tell them what our intent was? Because it seems like the intent of what we're looking for was completely missed here. Because we made this more stringent. So I just want to know where the disconnect is.
I actually am not reading it that way. I think when "social distance can't be maintained" is the operative phrase there. But if you want to reword it, I was clear with John Foskett that we wanted to make sure that adults during non-school hours did not have to be masked. And so if you feel that this language does not reflect that, I'm willing to take it back to him. I think I'm reading it differently, and so I didn't have that take. But if the committee is seeing that it seems more stringent, then we'll have him revise it.
Yeah, I mean, because I mean, it's, to me, it's clear as a bell. All individuals who are not students must continue to wear masks outdoors on school property when social distancing cannot be maintained. And he actually went as far as to strike the language that we had put in that said, like that made the exception outside of school hours. So the fact that he went as far as to strike that language makes this pretty clear. And I just want, I just, you know, I know we need to come up to date with where the state is, but I actually think this is more stringent than what the state released. So I just, I want to make sure that we're clear on what we're approving.
I think it's, I don't know that it's more stringent than what the state released. I actually think it, other than missing those few little words, it reflects what the state released. I do think we should add those words back, the "during school hours." I was just looking at it, need to pull it up again.
We provided that to John based on your meeting last week. And as our legal counsel, he struck that. So I don't think that the intention was to do away with what the committee wanted, but he felt that the language that was proposed, he wanted changed. I'm willing to take it back to him and say, it feels more stringent to the committee and they want it to be more open.
Can we just be like clear with him that the goal is to meet what the state guidance is? Therefore, you know, we don't want on Saturday and Sunday, adults, you know, who we have 70% vaccination rate in our town.
We actually provided him the state guidance, so he had that as he was developing it.
Emily?
So I think I can understand where maybe he got confused. The, our legal, just because the way he wrote it is the state guidance and we added something. So if we took down the signs that are all over our school properties, when school is out of session, people won't be wearing masks. You know what I mean? So that's where maybe I think he might just be confused because we have where, you know, masks required signs all over all our properties. So if those were taken down, people wouldn't be needing to wear masks, right? So I think there might just be some confusion with the way we're set up right now and what he must think.
I definitely think there's confusion, but the problem is the signs are there to notify people of the policy. The signs don't set the policy. We set the policy. And we're voting on this policy, which says they need to wear a mask.
But this doesn't say after school hours. This says.
At all times. It says, look, all other individuals who are not students must continue to wear masks outdoors on school property when social distancing is not maintained. If you don't clarify that it's only during certain times, it's all the time. That's the way the law works. So I think we need to understand our policies before we vote them.
I would simply suggest that we add back "on school grounds during school hours."
I think John's workaround was when "social distance couldn't be maintained." I think he thought that that was the operative phrase, that people could make decisions not to wear a mask if they thought that they were maintaining the distance.
Okay.
But the state guidance doesn't say that you need to maintain social distancing anymore.
Well. It says, for adults, they do need to maintain social distance or they need to put a mask on.
Yes.
Period.
Yeah, on school property.
Yep. Yep.
No, I'm saying non-school related.
Right, that's where I think.
Non-school related activities.
Right, and that's where I think confusion is with what this, what he put in the policy. Can we just change the wording to say?
Yes.
Yes, I think so.
Yes.
Okay, so what it will read is, "masks must be worn by all individuals inside school buildings, including all schools and the school district central offices and on school transportation." "Students are exempt from wearing, students are exempt from masking requirements when outdoors on school property, even when social distancing cannot be maintained. All other individuals who are not students must continue to wear masks outdoors on school property when social distancing can be maintained, cannot be maintained." So it, okay, so it needs to read, "all other individuals who are not students must continue to wear masks outdoors on school properties during school hours when social distancing cannot be maintained." So that's just what.
And then can you just clear this by legal and get their sign off? And then revote this again tomorrow because I'm concerned that he struck this. I'm just, I'm on, I would prefer to have our ducks in row on this first.
Um, so I don't think there's a reason that we don't need to vote this this evening. I think we can vote it and.
We only need to revote it if there, if there's an issue and we need to modify it.
Correct. Yeah, and I would like to reach back out to John and get, or, and maybe it's actually you, John, get a little clarity on the mask break piece so that we can really have that buttoned up as well.
Our lead nurse, Deanna McMahon, has her hand up and I'm inclined to motion to listen to what she has to say.
Sure, I can allow Deanna to speak on this one. She's our resident expert.
I just want to ask, when I was looking at a lot of information today online, are we considering the older kids, like the high school students, not adults? When we're talking about this non-mask? We're talking about adults and we're saying that adults have to be masked when they're outside if they can't maintain six feet. But I also feel like students of high school age are also adults in some ways. So I just had to put that out there.
So I believe if I'm reading the guidance correctly, it's non-student, adults who are non-students.
All other individuals who are not students.
So if we, 19 year olds.
High school students are students.
Yeah, so if, for our high school students that are, you know, 18, 19, we have high school students up to 21, this policy, the way it reads, will not be required to be masked.
And we're talking about vaccinated or unvaccinated?
Correct.
Yeah, there's no stipulation. So even unvaccinated individuals do not need to be socially distanced or masked according to this policy.
Correct. Students no longer have to wear masks when outdoors. That's what the guidance reads. And that's, I think, what our policy is, the changes to the policy is reflecting.
Deanna, did you have a comment on that that you wanted to bring to the table?
Well, I just feel like some of the things that I read today, it's really based on this no mask outside. If you can't be more than six feet away, I understand it as you should be vaccinated. And we all have to have this honor system of who's vaccinated and who's not. And that's just not going to be something that we're going to be able to figure out. So I just think it puts us in a kind of a predicament. There's a bit of a predicament because I feel like the high school students should be treated like adult age because they have the ability to pass COVID on to each other the same way adults do. Younger kids do not. In research, it states that they don't transmit the COVID-19 to one another in the younger grades. And I just consider the older kids to be a little more at risk. Our numbers are beautiful in Marblehead, okay? I'm very happy with how the numbers are going and I'm not, I really don't consider myself an alarmist. However, I just find this to be a little bit of a very gray area. And I find it difficult because it just, like many things, COVID doesn't fit into a certain box. So that's just my concern there, that's all.
Well, I think that that's been the contradictory things coming out of DESI all during the pandemic, that there were capacity limits on places except schools. And suddenly, schools were these magical places that were different. So you couldn't have indoor gatherings of a certain size, but a school could. And they did not differentiate student and say 18 or younger or adult students. And Sarah Fox is absolutely correct. Our special education students are entitled to be in the building until they're 22. So we have students as old as 22 that are still called students. Correct.
Right. And we're talking about being outside. We are. We're not talking about masking on the inside.
We didn't.
Oh, he can't hear David.
I don't think David was speaking.
I think it was, I think there was a lag.
Just one more thing, I just, my concern is when we get closer than six feet. I would be happy if we could put something in there that we were saying that everyone could be unmasked as long as we were still at six feet.
But I think, yeah, I think that's where the guidance is differing, that it doesn't matter whether you're closer than six feet, as long as you're outdoors. It does not matter whether you're closer than six feet and that there's no quarantining due to any of this as well.
Right, so then pieces that stick in my mind are, I have the choral people that are asking about singing. And then I have also the band. And then I think about high school lunch. A lot of us eat outside at high school lunch. So if we're going to tell the kids they can be outside, no mask, closer than six feet, then they're going to be eating lunch closer than six feet. And then I see that as a problem because eating is a high risk behavior. So there's a lot of little nuances I think we got to really look deeply at, that's all.
I guess I'm struggling because DESI's guidance doesn't look deeply at that. And I think, I think where I'm really struggling with DESI's guidance is that they've cordoned off adults as not being able to be outside, whereas everywhere else, adults can be, I mean, you know, Fenway Park is going to have a bunch of adults, 35,000 adults, sitting next to each other next weekend. Drinking and cheering and eating and, you know, so I think some of these things, there's a disconnect between some of these things that I'm not exactly sure, given the research and given, you know, where the state is headed, that it's, that outdoors is really a thing. Everything that I read on outdoors right now is that the transmission at most is a risk of about, it's like 0.1%.
But then you got to put in the behaviors of eating. Eating is a higher risk. Singing is a higher risk. And I don't know a lot of information about as far as banned and all those things go, but I believe those are considered higher risk. And I'm just letting you know, people are asking questions about those things. And so I want to try to, if we can, button those up over the next couple of days too.
Yeah, and I don't know, am I being heard? Can you hear me? I think, once again, that's indoors. This, we're, this came down, this started with the governor, I believe, on Monday, right? The governor made his announcement that effective Tuesday, per state guidelines that came from, you see guidelines, that basically if you're outside during recess and youth sports are outdoors, no masks. Then MIAA took the vote on Tuesday.
The public can't hear anything David's saying.
High school athletics.
It's a delay.
Masks are not required when you're playing? Masks are not required when you.
It's slowly catching up. You're frozen right now, so I doubt. Try turning your video off.
I can hear.
Okay, David's going to leave it and leave and come back in. But I think basically what you're saying is that all of these other. Can, Sarah, can you hear me? Okay, that all of these other activities.
I can hear you. It's just David's not coming through. It's like a 90 cell phone.
Yeah. So all of these other activities are being allowed without masks. And, you know, that have been identified as higher risk in the past. And so, again, I think it seems as though outdoors is a really important piece to this. And that's, again, that's the research that I read as well. Megan?
But the sports will be allowed unmasked as well, according to MIAA, right? So I totally take Deanna's point and I think it's a valid point. But I think even those other activities, according to the guidance, are allowed unmasked at this point.
They are. There was a call with the commissioner today and I can forward this updated information to Deanna. But singing guidance has not changed, woodwind guidance has not changed, but outdoor classrooms and recess, there's no quarantine necessary. And Secretary Sutter is getting ready to come out and say they're not going to do close contact tracing either, even if someone has come into contact with somebody who is diagnosed as COVID positive. So again, like everything during the pandemic, this is evolving. And the commissioner just updated us today on that recess guidance. And so outdoor classrooms is the same thing that they're getting ready to say, no quarantining or close contact for your outdoor classrooms.
So just so I'm clear, sports are allowed.
They are.
Band and chorus is not.
They have guidance for it, outside, certain distance apart.
Okay.
Beyond the fact that that seems completely ridiculous. Like if you have a ball in your hand, you're safe. But if you have a clarinet, you're dangerous. Like, I'm sorry. Like, I, I'm sorry, that is just, it's ludicrous.
No disagreement, Sarah.
Ludicrous. So what about indoor sports? So our policy's saying indoors, but MIAA is saying indoor sports, like wrestling, basketball. So.
No, there, there are hierarchies of sports. So the EEA, uh, distributed guidance, and then MIAA went in line with that guidance on Tuesday. And so there are tiered sports that some are more dangerous than others, sir.
Okay, all right, so they'll be masked.
Deanna, you've got your hand back up. Oh, sorry, Sarah.
So with the distancing, so we have a group of five, sixteen-year-olds sitting having lunch hip to hip on the bench, you know, for half an hour. One of them pops positive, you know, that later that night. We're not going to contact trace that because they were under the magical umbrella of the schools. But if they had been across the street eating in the parking lot at, like, the bank, the magical umbrella's gone and now we're going to contact trace those kids?
No, I, I believe that they're going to eventually get rid of contact tracing altogether. I spoke to Tracy at the Board of Health, and I do believe that that's going to be going to buy.
Okay. I just, I don't buy into the magical umbrella idea.
Right. I would love to just keep lunch at six feet. We, we can have our masks off. They can leave their masks off outside. This lunch at high school is outside. But I, I'd like there maybe to be a stipulation in there that we still want those kids eating at six feet.
Emily, hands her hand up.
Yeah, Emily, go ahead.
Um, so that I was just going to say, um, what Deanna said, none of this talks about eating. Um, and it's strictly recess is what the guidance said in sports. So when the younger kids eat outside, they're still going to be distanced. I don't think that's being taken away. So I think we say lunch, no matter what grade you're in, you have to be distant. But if you're outside, I don't know when older kids go outside in those grades, but they don't, you know, they don't have recess, but they don't need to be masked. But I agree that lunch should continue to be distanced. Outside or inside or.
At this point, do we know what we're voting on? Or should we bring this to our attorneys and come back with a clear thing to vote on tomorrow? Because, I mean, we've changed the six weeks to Tuesday.
I don't think we, I think we've only really suggested, in addition to John Foskett's changes, the one, the, the wording during school hours for the adults. The rest is sort of in discussion.
So the six-foot lunch didn't just get put in?
No, we're discussing it. And I guess I just am, uh, I'm, I'm really struggling with putting any, any stipulations on outside. I, I, I'm not in favor of that. So I think maybe what we can do, this is what I'm going to propose, is that we vote the changes that we've discussed. And that we also then go back to John Foskett and ask about the, the ed, the addition of during school hours for the adults. Make sure that that's okay. And then we ask about, we, we clear up for tomorrow evening, the mask break piece. And then we clear up lunch. And then I would actually like to suggest an additional addition to this that I think would also need to go through Foskett is that in order to avoid lags in our policy, particularly as we head into the summer months, and it can be harder to, to get a quorum, and we do, we are going to have students in our buildings during the summer, that we, that we allow for wording to be added to this policy that would allow for the superintendent to make changes to the mask policy as directed by DESI guidance, until the school committee can, can meet to vote on said guidance. Any thoughts?
I, I'm just going to reiterate. I, I feel like went to legal, we got a written policy from them. It didn't meet what we were looking for. We just played a lot of wordsmithing. We put some things in. We think we'll put some things in tomorrow. Like, I, I would really just like a finalized policy to vote on so that we know what we're voting on. I ju, I, I feel this is very unorganized and discombobulated right now, to be perfectly honest.
Um, I disagree. I, I'm, you know, I think we're discussing policy changes, you know, it didn't go through the subcommittee. So this, these types of conversations would usually occur at the subcommittee level and then be brought to the school committee. But in the interest of time, that's not what we did this time around. So, you know, we're, we're, we're making the sausage. We're, you're, we're, we're, we're watching it be made. So, you know, I, I really do not want to leave this meeting tonight not changing anything in our current policy. I would, again, I, I will actually ask for a motion to accept the changes that are outlined on the policy by John Foskett with the addition of during school hours, as discussed earlier.
Second?
I need a first.
We'll move.
David or Megan or Sarah? You are not unmuted, David.
Can you hear me now? Sarah Fox, could you hear me now? Just, we have a very unstable connection tonight for some reason in the school, so. Sorry about that.
So there's been a motion. Can I get a second?
Through the chair.
Yes.
I would just support that you make, uh, that you vote this evening because it will be very unfair to our student athletes to have to wait another day to be able to operate under the MIAA guidance. And although there may be some changes that you want to make tomorrow night, it will enable those games for them to have a level playing field tomorrow.
Yep, and I.
Yep, David, go ahead.
And I, and I would agree with that, but also for recess tomorrow, I think it's going to be a nice opportunity to allow recess to take place outside without masks. That's part of what we heard. I heard recess and athletics outdoors. And then if a class is held outdoors or some sort of activities being held outdoors. Or some sort of activities being held outdoors. That's, that's included.
And just to clarify, we're passing this at no distancing for lunch in disregard to what Nurse McMahon proposed.
Correct. We're following the DESI guidance.
Yeah, that, I wouldn't want to characterize it as disregarding anybody's, there's all kinds of opinions here. And we followed COVID on the way up, and we're following COVID guidance on the way out. And the guidance has been brought forward to us by, you know, people way above my pay grade that have all.
I think we just lost you.
You know, lost me again.
Yeah, Deanna raised her hand again.
Yeah, Deanna.
I didn't see anything on DESI's guidance that said anything about lunch. They talk about outside, but I didn't see anything that specifically said including eating lunch outside. So I don't think that DESI's covered lunch in, in what I've read. Does somebody else see something different than I do?
I have not seen lunch mentioned in DESI's guidance. Um, I've seen that when you're outdoors, you can have your mask off regardless of distance and regardless of activity. Just running around at recess and, and playing sports is unmasked. And there, and that, that is specifically stated.
Lunch is stationary and you're sitting with the same people for more than fifteen minutes, closer than six feet, if you don't have a, a, a distance guidance. That's where, just where I'm coming from.
Correct.
I believe DESI specifically spoke, their language was specifically to recess and outdoor gym.
So there would be no change to lunch. We would follow what we're currently doing.
So keep the distance at lunch.
Yes. I, I'm not hearing a call to ignore distancing at lunch. Because we know it's going to be unmasked, and we've been very successful with what we've been doing.
So the lunch, lunch will be that they can just keep their masks off. We don't have to have them put them back on. So, because at school, we're saying have your mask off while you're eating, but when you're done eating, put it back on. So if you can be outside without your mask on, that's great, but we want you at six feet and you can eat.
Yes.
And we'll check on that, um, tomorrow, before tomorrow's meeting.
I'm, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm fine with that. Um, you know, I think we have DESI guidance, but obviously Deanna's, you know, a valuable resource for us as well. And I think, you know, that's a happy medium to move forward so we can at least, the recess and the gym and the sports and other outside activities we can move forward on.
Sarah, can you read just that red portion that we're amending and what we're voting on for clarification? Because it's changed, it's changed, I think, for a third or fourth time now.
So, um, masks must be worn by all individuals inside school buildings, including all schools and the school district central offices and on school transportation. Students are exempt from masking requirements when outdoors on school property, even when social distancing cannot be maintained. All other individuals who are not students must continue to wear masks outdoors on school property during school hours when social distancing cannot be maintained. Individuals attending school-sponsored events that do not occur on school property are subject to the masking requirements applicable to that property. And then the further down striking the, the piece in the mask breaks, which will be preferably outdoors, which ideally occur outdoors and with maximal physical distancing. And then the statement about during physical education classes, chorus, choir, singing, brass, woodwind instruments, or musical theater, all of which must occur outside with a minimum of ten feet of physical distancing between individuals.
Okay, so we didn't include lunch today. We'll talk about John Foskett and maybe do it tomorrow is this concept. But as of what we're voting right now, lunch is free. They can, they can do whatever they want tomorrow. According to what we're voting. I, I'm, I'm not trying to be a stickler, but a policy is a legal document and we need to make sure it's saying what we want. Or at least what we think it's saying.
Okay.
Yes, I think so.
Doors. No, can't hear me. I don't know what's up. Sorry.
Okay, there's a delay, so go ahead.
Not a word of what he's saying can be heard.
All right, so I have a motion and it's seconded. Um, I think we have what we need to ask for, for tomorrow, tomorrow's meeting to be discussed. I would also like everybody to think about the, the proposition that I put forward of allowing the superintendent to make changes until the committee can, um, call a meeting and, and find a quorum and call a meeting. But that'll be discussed tomorrow evening as well, and we can run that through legal as well. So I will call for a roll call vote. Sarah Gold, yes. Emily Barron?
Yes.
Sarah Fox?
Yes. I, I still don't know, like, okay, I, it's, there still is no clarification because you didn't answer my question. I'm just going to let it go at this point, but we're voting.
There, there's a motion on the table with the, and I.
What is the motion, Sarah?
That we accept the changes as defined, as, as, as written by John Foskett with the addition of the during school hours, which is what I just read.
Okay, so when John and Deanna and Emily said with the ma, uh, with, at lunch, that's not on the table. That's not what we're voting on. We're not doing lunch.
Not today. Correct. Unless someone wants to move to amend the motion. Uh, David Harris?
If you can hear me, yes, or.
All right, that motion passes, five to zero. Thank you, everyone, and that, uh, leads us to the end of our meeting. And so I will adjourn us at.
There were more hands up. I motion for public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see any hands up. Um, all right, so Sarah has motion for public comment. Uh, can I get a second? Does anybody want a second public comment?
I'll second.
Okay, Emily, second. All right. Sarah Gold, yes. Emily Barron?
Yes.
Sarah Fox?
Yes.
David Harris? David's saying yes. And Megan?
Yes.
So our video's working, but not our audio for some reason. Okay.
All right, Emily Dewitt, I see that you have your hand raised. Um, can everyone please state their name and address for the record as well? Emily Dewitt, go ahead.
Hi, Emily Dewitt, one fifty-four Atlantic Avenue. Um, thank you for holding this special meeting tonight, first off. Um, I, I'm just so lost and confused, but I think I'm happy that you all just voted in agreement to unmask our kids at recess and during athletic play. Um, following science there and DESI and the CDC. I just have a question, if lunch is coming up as a second topic. Sorry?
Go ahead.
Um, I'm just asking a, a question. What is the difference between our kids gathering to play a sport, where they will come into contact with each other unmasked, and sitting down, not on top of each other, to eat lunch outdoors? I, I just don't see how this is up for debate right now. I don't, I don't see it. The data's not there to support it nationally and within Marblehead. We're not at risk. We're moving in the right direction, but why are we on this snag right now amongst the committee members where it seems like there's mass confusion amongst you and there's more out here? And I just want to say, we need clarity right now because there's a lot of miscommunication and there's a lot of infighting. And we need leadership to be able to clarify it from the top down. So I hope that you can do that for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Eileen Demore?
Hi, Sarah. Um, I was just wondering when, because I have a good feeling that DESI is going to change the, um, singing guidance soon. And so when that happens, um, will we be notified right away? So, because we only have eighteen days left with the kids and I am just dying to do some meaningful singing with them. Um, so I'm just wondering what the, what will happen when DESI announces that? How long will we have to wait?
John, go ahead.
During the call with the commissioner today, I'm just reading directly from the notes. Singing guidance, working with doctors, but understanding now that kids can be outside without mask, would still recommend distancing. There are no changes inside that he is aware of. So that was his update for schools and singing today, Eileen.
Okay, thank you. I've, I've heard that there's talk in DESI that it will be changing soon. So if it did, let's say on Friday they made an announcement, how long would we have to wait until we could make that change? Like if they changed the distancing from ten feet to six feet, which is my hope, what would, how would that work? How would we be informed that we could do that?
Through the chair. You have my commitment that you will be the first person I call.
Ah, thank you. That's awesome. Thank you so much.
And we did strike that piece, just as we just voted, um, about. And we did strike that piece just as we just voted about about the, the, the piece with choir and singing in it. So as far as I read our policy, I do not think that it will be an issue of needing to call an additional meeting. Emily, I will read the, what we, what we just voted on, um, just for clarity's sake. So masks must be worn by all individuals inside school buildings, including all schools and the school district central offices and on school transportation. Students are exempt from masking requirements when outdoors on school property, even when social distancing cannot be maintained. All other individuals who are not students must continue to wear masks outdoors during school hours on school property when social distancing cannot be maintained. Individuals attending school-sponsored events that do not occur on school property are subject to the masking requirements applicable to that property. Uh, Andrew Kramer, I've got, see your hand up next.
Hi, Andrew Kramer, Seven Clifton Avenue. So attending a game or an event as a spectator, I don't have to wear a mask.
I believe that is what the guidance-
That's what we're going for.
Once we put in outside school hours, you're safe, as long as it's not like a midday game, which I don't think they have.
I don't think you wrote it that way, but, okay.
Nope, we did. We added the during school hours.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, I do not see anybody else's hand raised, so I will adjourn us at seven fifty-two. And again, this is on the agenda for tomorrow, um, so we can continue to discuss and make any tweaks and changes as necessary. Thank you, everyone.